Morning, gentlemen, supervisors.
Morning, sir.
Staff, visitors, and all of the leadership that's represented here. I want to welcome each and every one to our series of meetings this morning. It's always good to see the different ones come over to observe, to give input, whatever. So I want to welcome everybody. Before we get into our series of meetings, let's go ahead and have our pledge of allegiance. Ben Dougdale will lead us there, and then we'll have a prayer. Mr. Paul Hancock will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity that we have to meet and to discuss the businesses of the county. We ask you, Father, that Thou would lead and guide our meetings, that we'll be able to do what's best for the county and the citizens of this county. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Dougdale, Mr. Hancock, for the pledge and for the prayer. Okay, let's go ahead and go into our meetings now. Cheryl, go ahead and call the county's Public Health Services District meeting to order at this time. We do have one item on the agenda.
Good morning, Supervisor Shirley, Supervisor Shamley, and Supervisor Shepherd.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Wingard and Mr. Whiting. I am Debbie Padilla. I am the Public Health Promotion Division Manager with the Apache County Public Health Services District. Chris Sexton was not available to be here this morning, so he asked me to present the board item. Discussion and possible approval of the memorandum of understanding between Apache County Public Health District Services and Windo Rock Unified School District to provide physical facilities to support personnel who are providing teen pregnancy prevention services.
Okay, gentlemen, what are your wishes?
I think, Chairman.
Shamley.
I make a motion. I have some questions.
Motion to go ahead and go with the particular item as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to go with the particular item as presented. Mr. Shamley, question?
Yes, ma'am. What exactly does this program do? How long has it done it, et cetera?
All right. This is the native stand curriculum that is provided to youth at three high schools in, on the Navajo Nation, Chinley High School, Gannato High School, and Windo Rock High School. This program has been in effect since 2006. We have two women that facilitate this evidence-based curriculum that is approved by the Arizona Department of Education and the Arizona Department of Health Services, who funds this program to provide these services. These services are provided to youth age 12 through 19, and they have to have parent permission to be involved in this class. We have two native women who facilitate the lessons that are housed in Gannato. We have a mobile there with Mr. Shepherd, and so they provide this curriculum. I did leave some information in front of you. The CDC funded this program, and it is, was created by Native American people for the Native American youth. And so we are up there to provide life skills education for our youth. And I'm trying to think. Did I miss anything, Terry? May I introduce Terry Sloan? She's our coordinator for this program, and she oversees three staff. And so.
Good morning. I like to think of this program as a youth life skills and responsibility programs that we deliver to our youth. And it does focus on goal setting. We focus on healthy relationships. And a big piece that we do have for the curriculum is preventing pregnancy and the spread of STIs and STDs among, you know, youths. We really encourage them and, you know, protecting themselves. We want them to finish school. We want them to go to college. So these life skills programs help with that, to help them meet their goals for their futures in their lives. So they're really great programs. The kids are very interactive. They have lots of different activities that are involved that get the youth to come out and, you know, communicate with one another and us as the facilitators.
Okay. Thank you.
This is one program that we provide as a service for our youth. We also provide other evidence-based curriculum to our youth here in St. John's and Concho Elementary School. And so, like I said, we've been doing it for, since 2006. We are trained to deliver this service by the Department of Health. And do you have any other questions I can answer for you? You're more than welcome to attend a class. We, you know, I left you a schedule of times and dates that our staff are providing that service on the nation.
Okay, gentlemen, if there are no other questions, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that. Thank you. Cheryl, will you entertain a motion to adjourn this particular Health Services District meeting?
Chairman, motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Motion and a second to adjourn the Health Services District meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, the Health Services District meeting is hereby adjourned. Okay, let's go ahead and call the Juvenile Jail District meeting to order. We do have one item on the agenda. Hancock.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
We are looking to purchase two Ford F-150 Supercab trucks. It's a total of $55,746.74 from Sholo Ford. They came in as the lowest bid. We looked at the state contract. We sent an email to the person at the state contract, and they said they didn't have any for these particular vehicles. So Sholo Ford is our low bid.
Okay, gentlemen.
Make a motion.
Okay, motion to approve the particular item. Is there a second?
Yeah, second. No question.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Mr. Shamley, question?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Hancock, what are the trucks to be used for?
Yes, sir. The primary purpose of one of the trucks is going to be with our community restitution, where we will be using it for projects around the county, hauling wood, cleaning up weeds, and stuff like that. The second one will be a secondary transport vehicle, when we transport our juveniles from anywhere in Apache County to the juvenile detention center in Holbrook.
There are other questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Cheryl, will you entertain a motion to adjourn the Juvenile Jail District meeting?
Let's go ahead and make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do this or with that. The Juvenile Jail District meeting is hereby adjourned. Okay, let's go ahead and call the county's Flood Control District meeting to order at this time. We do have one item on the agenda. Mr. Crosby.
Good morning, supervisors. This is a public hearing. So we need to open a public hearing. I'd recommend we do that. Let me present the item. The item is to bring before the Board of Supervisors, the Flood Control District Board in this case, a flood control damage prevention ordinance. This ordinance is not unlike the ordinance that we presently have enacted. We met with the Department of Water Resources, who, they travel around the state to the various local governments who have flood ordinances, and they help us bring our ordinance up into a standard that fits the state model. So we met with a lady from ADWR. We went through our flood ordinance with her. She made recommendations that would clarify definitions. A lot of it was a lot of vernacular, just changing a few words, changing the definitions slightly, so that we closely matched the state model. So there's not any substantial changes to our floodplain ordinance. It's just where we now look like the state model for flood damage prevention ordinance. So with that, we would recommend that the Board approve adopting this ordinance dated today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crosby. There are no objections from my colleagues. Cheryl, go ahead and open this particular item to public hearing mode. If there is anyone here wanting to address this particular item under this public hearing mode, you're free to come forward. Mr. Walsh.
George Walsh, Vernon, Arizona. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I would ask that this not be approved today and give the public a little more time. I believe there was only one notice placed in the paper and very little other than that to allow the public to know that you're making a change to this ordinance. I would ask that you take a little more time to get some more public involvement before you jump on approving this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wanting to address the Board on this particular issue? Okay, I don't see anyone, gentlemen. Given that, Cheryl, will you entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion, we close. Public hearing, Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to close the public hearing portion of this particular item. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do this. So with that, the public hearing portion of this particular item is hereby closed. Now, gentlemen, what are your wishes? You heard the recommendation from Mr. Crosby. Is there any discussion or questions?
I have a question.
Chairman, Mr. Shamley.
The concern brought up about the running of notices, I don't know anything about that. Do we know when they were ran? Were they ran twice?
Mr. Crosby.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we received confirmation from the White Mountain Independent that the ad was, the notice was run on January 24th and on January 31st for Apache County.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Otherwise, gentlemen, what are your wishes?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shepherd.
If possible, Mr. Crosby, would I be, would we be able to get, I know it's just little clarifications on definitions to fit the state model, but in comparisons to what we have currently? Do you have a highlighted version, I guess, what was changed? Or can you highlight specifics other than just the definitions? I was taking a look at some of the language in there, but I was looking for where the particular changes were made and proposed. So can you identify those for me?
We can, I can't identify those at this moment, but I can definitely provide you with what our ordinance is presently before this adoption, and then what it would be at this adoption. I think that would be helpful to the supervisors to see that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Chairman, I'd make, in light of that, because I would like to see that too, I'd like to make a motion, we table it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to table. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, with that, the particular item is table. Okay, the Cheryl, will you entertain a motion to adjourn this Flood Control District meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Make a second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, the Flood Control District meeting is hereby adjourned. Okay, let's go ahead and call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order at this time. We do have several items on the agenda. Item number one, Mr. Wingard.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good morning. This item is the consent agenda. We have items A, B, and C, and we would recommend approval.
Okay, gentlemen.
So moved. Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a second, Chairman.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Questions, discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, item number two, Mr. Wingard.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Number two is an update regarding state of emergency due to snow and accumulated mud throughout Apache County. As you know, we are under a state of emergency. We still have a lot of snow in the high country. I made a trip up to the Navajo Nation latter part of last week, and there's still a lot of mud in the higher country. School buses are still having trouble picking up kids due to that. If folks haven't seen a four-wheel-drive school bus and what it can do to a muddy road, it's pretty tough what they do to roads. I know down south, we still have mud or snow in the high country. We don't have as school buses so much, picking up school kids, but there still is snow. So anyway, there might be somebody that'd like to talk more about this, Mr. Chairman, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd.
I guess for my district, we've been pretty active since we've made the declaration of emergency. And of course, during the time, you know, the storms came, it came twice. First time, we did a lot of snow removals up to about close to two feet up in Sawmill and Sahili in the higher country, whereas the lower country just received a lot of rain. Not too there long after, about three days later, another couple of storms went through, and then another pass of about a couple of feet of snow went through. And so we've been on board as far as trying to clear those roads. I was trying to get some information onto how many, we average about maybe 60 miles of road that we've cleared on the snow removals. Of course, there were, working with the local entities as far as the CHR, Fire Department, Gannato Fire, and all the fire departments that are there for stranded individuals. We've had to pull out a couple people that were stranded, knowing that there were a couple of kids involved, you know, and they've been stranded out in the middle of these roads that were muddy. And that's just kind of the highlights of our operation at this time. We did have an emergency operations command procedure-type model set up, and I believe Mr. Wingard and Mr. Crosby had taken, come by to take a look at what we were doing, just to be more orderly in that. And that was one of the things that we immediately got jumped onto once we came into offices, that we prepare for snow removals and have an incident command. So I'm very proud of my staff that have been there, working around the clock as much as possible, even on the weekends, to make things easier and prepare for schools on Monday. So I do appreciate everybody's involvement, and also our county staff as far as our emergency service personnel, Chief Deputy Eager and his staff as well. And they've been helpful and insightful, and given us information on, you know, the procedures and moving forward. So I do want us to say thank you to all the staff, and that has been helpful in our operations. And we do have another possible moisture and storm that could possibly develop this weekend, so we're just on alert for that. And so I do appreciate Chairman and Board of Supervisors for their declaration. Took a couple days later for the nation to jump on board, but they're still in operation mode as well as possible, too. So I do, just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Chairman, Mr. Shamley.
Yes, sir. Much the same as Mr. Shepherd. I wanted to thank, and particularly, my chambers in Round Valley and St. John's Road Yards. They worked a lot of hours getting roads opened. I got a lot of emails. I went and drove every email I got and took pictures. So the roads, even when they're not the best infrastructure in the world, they did a fine job getting them open for people, especially in Alpine, where we were hit extra deep. They got a minimum of one lane into everybody immediately, which helped, because I happened to be there with Devin Brown on a meeting when there was a fire call even. And it allowed the services to get in when they didn't think they would get in. The chief said that, until they saw the work the county had done. So Rafael up north was very good. I had never met him, but just over the phone throughout this, he's been more than helpful on weekends. Lynch. And a lot of volunteers in the St. Michael's community, Mary Beth and Martha and Curran and Gloria, helped distribute a lot of wood to those that were blocked in when they had vehicles, whereas the resident wouldn't be able to get out. So really, just thanks out there to those people that have to be out there getting wet, while many of us are fortunate enough to maybe stay dry and just make these things go on.
Yes, likewise, I agree with what we've been doing regarding taking care of people under this emergency. I'd like to see the declaration continue, possibly for another couple of weeks, maybe I appreciate all of the staff up and down, including my staff, for having been there for the people, for the students. We've been working really hard. Even yesterday, Chinley Unified School District didn't go to school, the students. A lot of it's because of the mud that is still out there. And there are still a lot of people, because of the melting snow, because of the mud, still not really able to go in and out, you know, of their residences. So with that, I'd like to see the emergency, the declaration of emergency that's in place continue. I guess that for at least a couple more weeks, maybe longer, depending on what the weather We've been working very closely with our chapter officials and with our council delegates. It's always appreciated. Here and there, we've been sharing causes, you know, to distribute food, wood, to work on the roads. So government's working together, I think that's the way to go, and we've been doing that. So we appreciate that. So given that, gentlemen, what are your wishes?
Chairman, I have a question about that. Do, my understanding was, is until we made a motion to kill the emergency declaration, we're good to go. So do we need to do anything? I just don't know.
I take it that under this possible action?
Okay.
We could reaffirm.
Okay, well, I make a motion, we reaffirm it then.
Yeah. Okay, the motion is to reaffirm the declaration of emergency, to continue with it, and that's my understanding. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to continue with our declaration of emergency. We'll work with our staff, Mr. Wingard and Mr. Crosby, to see when possibly we can put an end to the emergency declaration. Given that, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that. So, Mr. Wingard, item number three.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Number three is discussion and possible approval of a restaurant liquor license application recommendation for Lance Bauer of the Hidden Metal Ranch. This is on 620 County Road, 1325 near Greer. We have not received any protests on this, and we would recommend approval.
Gentlemen.
I make a motion, we approve item number three.
Is there a second? Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, item number four, Mr. Wingard.
Yes, number four is discussion and possible approval of a letter supporting the implementation of outreach officers for Veterans Affairs. This is a follow-up to the discussion we had in our work session last Monday, and we would recommend approval.
Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to accept and approve.
I second, Chairman.
Motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, item number five. Mr. Shamley.
Yeah, this is, item number five is discussion, possible approval of a letter from the Board of Supervisors to the Bureau of Land Management regarding travel management. The issue at hand here is the BLM is going to try to institute a new program. Historically speaking, we face closures at 86% rates to our public lands when they engage travel management. That's a huge hindrance to outdoor recreation and tourism, which is one of our few industries in this county. So we need to actively engage it, and we are allowed to through the BLM manual, as a joint planning agency, being a local government. So I would like to send this letter of these key points, which is really, at this point, responding just to the packet that they sent the county. And the map and everything is in the backup material.
Mr. Whiting.
The legalities of the letter.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, if the Board votes to do that, you can engage in that. That is appropriate for the Board to issue a letter and comment on this BLM regarding the proposed travel management. So whatever the Board wishes.
Okay, gentlemen, with that, what are your wishes?
So moved. Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to go with the particular item as presented. Are there any other discussions or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, item number six, Mr. Shamley.
Discussion and possible approval, letter commitment to United States Forest Service regarding the Greens Peak project. This should have been letter or comment, just for clarification for everybody, not commitment. That's in the backup material. There was a public meeting held two weeks back in the supervisor's office of the Forest Service. I attended on behalf of the county, because it's right there in my backyard. This project came about because of us pushing for more supply to our timber industries last April. This is finally a reaction to the 2014 categorical exclusions of the farm bill. But you'll see in the backup material, myself, and I vetted it with the School of Forestry at NAU, we have found some flaws with the project that would hinder the maximum capacity and benefit to the public. So we politely pointed those out, which is part of the process. And this is open right now. Anybody from the public can comment. From a local government perspective, these points that are in the backup material are our best points, and I recommend that we send this letter in.
Mr. Whiting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Essentially, this is the same in regards to the notice. It is proper, that's fine. A commitment is more specific than a comment, so the notice is appropriate. Also, in regards to the letter, again, if the Board wishes to take that action, they can do so by a majority vote. So it's up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Whiting. Gentlemen, what are your wishes?
I'd like to go ahead and motion to approve. Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Are there any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, item number seven, Mr. County Manager.
Yes, number seven, Mr. Chairman, is discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of Supervisor Doyle Shamley to represent Apache County on natural resource issues and notify the appropriate agencies. As you know, Supervisor Shamley, in a previous role, represented the county on natural resource issues. And we have these various agencies, like he just mentioned, with the BLM and the Forest Service, that we need to have a point of contact and a liaison. It's my understanding that Supervisor Shamley would come back to the Board with any reports or recommendations regarding these agencies. But this would, this would make him our representative, and we would also notify these agencies so that they understand who they could contact, and then we would bring it on to the Board after that. So we'd recommend approval.
Gentlemen, what are your wishes?
I'd like to make a motion, approve.
Okay. Okay.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Mr. Whiting, is it appropriate for Mr. Shamley, just, just protocol? To a second to motion? Does this one?
Mr. Chairman, that, that is, that is up to him. The board could take action on this without his vote, so I'll leave that up to him on whether he feels he should second it and/or vote. It's not anything specific to any actual commitment or agency. So, if he wants to do that, that, that's up to him. That being said, it's a general, if you will, notice regarding his role on the board. So, it's okay for him to do that, but I'll leave it up to him. It is to blanket, for lack of a better term, to allow him to represent the board with these various agencies, be it state, county, federal, et cetera.
Okay, given that, Mr. Shamley has seconded the motion, if he's, if he's okay with it, shall I go ahead and accept that second, Shamley?
Yeah, I don't, it's just, it's really, this stems from our discussion at the work session. So, I'd just like to, I think we need to, to move it forward and I, I don't feel uncomfortable seconding it. If we had a specific issue, an agency, then I wouldn't talk, but...
Okay, with that, then, Chair, I'll go ahead and accept that Mr. Shamley's second to, to this particular motion on this, on this particular item. Given that, are there any questions or discussion on the particular item? Mr. Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do appreciate the involvement of Mr. Shamley. I just understand that this is through, throughout Apache County and wherever we can help one another, I guess there's natural resources throughout Apache County, although sovereigns might, might be of particular interest, but, you know, working together and sharing resources, I think is a good thing, you know. So, I think what I'm asking is that we also reach out to our Navajo Nation Forestry, you know, because again, whatever resources and however we can help one another is closer to District One and District Two. I think that's something I would be supportive of and request of and going forward with this and talking with our partner, partners and when it talks, we're talking about natural resources and, and representing. So, I just wanted to put that on, on record and also make that request, we work together on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shamley?
I have reached out to the forester for the Navajos, Mr. Billy in particular, to engage him in a meeting to find out early on what their plans are. Mr. Dedman and other personnel in public safety have, and chapters in my district have brought up concerns about fire hazards. So, I've reached out to Mr. Billy of Navajo Forestry as well as the Hopi land team for the Hopi ranches and then also fourteen hour ranches out of the Navajo Nation. They both are having some issues, which so are the non-tribal cattle associations with inspection stations to get their beef to market. So, that's one of my early moves right now is to find out what issues are different natural resource users groups facing at this point.
Okay, with that, gentlemen, there is no other questions or discussion on a particular item. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, I understand item number, item number eight has been removed per our county manager. So, with that, let's go ahead and move on to item number nine, Mr. Crosby?
Good morning, Supervisors, again. I would like to modify this particular item. The item reads that we would want, we would like to modify the job classifications in my department as follows, changing Delos Bond from a Civil Engineering Aid Two to a Civil Engineering Tech Two with no increase in salary. The Steve Rogers from a GIS Program Tech to a Civil Engineering Tech One with a no increase in salary and Dale Hauser, a Civil Engineering Aid Two to a Civil Engineering Tech One with no increase in salary. In light of our work session and discussions of possible salary studies, I would acquiesce doing any changes or making any recommendation for changes at this point. However, I do recommend and ask for your approval to increase Tammy Davis to the midpoint of her range, at a range thirty-four, which is an increase in her salary of twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-one cents. This primarily due to her increased responsibilities are, we had a, an employee, Justin Lee, who recently resigned. He was a seventeen-year employee, he ran all of our Emergency 911 addressing, and she has assumed a, a large section of those responsibilities. And so, we were looking for the opportunity to pay her for those increased responsibilities and we recommend that approval.
Okay, gentlemen?
Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, approve.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to go with a particular item with some modifications. This is just regarding Ms. Tammy Davis, just because of increasing responsibilities, she's been moved to the, the mid-range. The rest, we go ahead and put on hold until the, possibly after the salary study, that's my understanding. So, with that, are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, Ms. Barzurto, item number ten?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Morning.
This is discussion and possible approval of contract number WFHF sixteen dash two oh three between Apache County and Arizona State Forestry for a cooperative fuels treatment. This is for the Whiting Homestead property near Vernon at a cost not to exceed forty thousand dollars with a ten percent match by the property owner. That forty thousand dollars is all grant funds.
Okay, gentlemen?
I make...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the particular item as presented. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, it's unanimous that we'll go ahead and do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eleven, Mr. Wingard?
Yes, Mr. Chamber, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just want to discuss briefly, so the public knows about how we prepare our agendas for the Board of Supervisors meeting. We try to make sure that we have smooth flowing board meetings and the agenda items are, are prepared and with, with backup material for both, for the board members as well as the public. We, by law, we have to post a meeting twenty-four hours in advance before the Board of Supervisors meeting, which means we could actually post the meeting before eight-thirty on Monday for a Tuesday meeting. But we would like to do more than that, more than what's required by the law. So, we try to post our meeting on Wednesday afternoon of the week prior, which would give the board as well as the public plenty of opportunity to look at the agenda, to go through the backup material and be prepared for the meeting on Tuesday. Now, in order to accommodate that, in the past, we've had a work, an agenda review work session, not with elected officials, but just with me and the different people that are, are putting items on the agenda. We usually do that on a Wednesday. We moved that to Tuesday morning. This is the Tuesday before the board meeting, so actually a week before the board meeting. And we go through every item and discuss it and make sure we have everything that we need as, as well as backup. And we do that primarily as an effort to make sure we're prepared for the board meeting and make sure that we can actually post the agenda with the backup material on Wednesday. So, just wanted to make sure the board and the public knew that, that we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can with the public and make sure that we're very prepared for these board meetings. Doesn't mean that it'll be perfect all the time, but wanted to communicate that, that we're, we're doing the best we can to, to make these board meetings move smoothly with plenty of preparation. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate that, Mr. Wingard. I think it's very important that we, we do some of the things you said that we're wanting to do or, or doing. So, given that, I don't know if there are any questions or discussion from my colleagues? Hearing none, all those, let's go ahead and move on. I guess that's just for notification, Mr. Wingard. Okay, so with that, let's go ahead and move on. Item number twelve, Mr. Wingard?
Yes, number twelve is notification of the meetings upcoming for the Board of Supervisors. We have the Eastern Counties meeting on February fifteenth at three P.M. at the CSA Building down in Phoenix. We also have small counties meeting on the same day at five-thirty P.M. The next day, we have CSA meeting. Now, we've, we didn't put the time in here, and so, we're going to repost this, it's at ten A.M. on Thursday, February sixteenth. And because we didn't put the time, we'll actually repost that particular item to make sure we're following the law. But it is at ten A.M. on Thursday, February sixteenth. That's the normal County Supervisor Association meeting in Phoenix.
Okay. That's just for notification, so let's go ahead and move on, we're about to get done with our meeting here. Item number, under, item number thirteen, Mr. Walsh? Okay. He defers at this time, so Mr. Modica?
My name's Art Modica and I live out at Hunt. And one of the concerns I've had since I've lived in this county over twenty years is, how do you prioritize the roadwork in this county? Because I understand you have emergencies like you have right now with the snow and the mud and everything else, but is there a meeting where they sit down and say, okay, this year, we're going to try to complete this road? Or we're going to try to complete this area by grading it, putting in a road? How do you do it? Because in my mind, everything's hipshot. And this is nothing against Mr. Crosby, he tries. But it's like, how do we plan the future of our roads? What roads have to be done and improved? I live off County Road fifty-two seventy. In the twenty years, they've added limestone to part of it. The egress was done by Mr. Crosby, he put in a culvert and they've bladed the road. The road goes all the way down to Blue Diamond and goes out to Snowflake Concho Road. If you drive that road, you will pound your car out in about a week down that Blue Diamond. It is horrible. And people now, and I know, I made the statement to one of the employees working in the engineering department, I said, people go out that road to go to Snowflake Concho, they go in there to their doctors, they go to shop. And he said to me, why should I worry about it? And to me, I don't know the person's name that said it to me, but I understand all the roads in this county have to be maintained in priority. But I'm trying to, do you guys have a yearly meeting where you sit down and talk about everything? Make a master plan and decide what you're going to do? And that's the only comment I want to make, because I don't think they do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Modica. That does the gambit of our agenda, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr.?
Can I have one second?
Mr. Wingard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to inform the board and the public, under the call of the public, because I didn't have an agenda item, that we have one of the largest counties in the state, in the country, we're the longest county in the United States, and it's difficult for people to attend these meetings because of those distances. Wanted to let the board know, if you look up on the ceiling, you see two cameras. We are recording this meeting today and starting from, from now on, we will edit the, the recording and take off the dead time at the beginning at the end, and it'll be on the website by tomorrow morning. So, the people that cannot make it to these meetings, that live too far away, can actually, if they want, go onto the website and watch the board meeting. Just wanted to inform the board of that.
Okay, I guess on that last comment from Mr. Modica, I guess it's, I'll just go ahead and leave it up to Mr. Shamley and Mr. Crosby, working together, maybe get together with Mr. Modica, see if he can answer his question?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah, maybe, you know, usually, at these meetings, we try to refer, you know, to the different appropriate entities. I don't know if you want to respond right now or...
No, I, I think it would, I might, I think it would be healthy for the public to, to know these issues. So, I personally, I will get with Mr. Crosby and ask myself, but I think it would be healthy to have a short agenda item at some future point or on the work session where engineering could go through the process for the sake of the whole board, how the decisions are made in each district or if they are different. I think it'd be a healthy discussion.
Okay. Okay, with that, gentlemen, we've, we're done. Chair, will you entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting?
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to adjourn the, the board meeting, gentlemen? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? With that, the board meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you, everybody.